Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the meeting back into order here. And we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is item number six. Yes, it is. Okay, applicant. Application number three twelve dash one sixty-one dash zero one five dash zero one eight two thousand twenty-three. Community's permit and site plan approval for Dancoe Communities for development on a mixed-use project in Powers Creek District that will include the construction of two buildings that will contain forty residential units, eighteen thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space and common use area. Two buildings that will include the following. A, a three-story building that will contain a mixture of residential and commercial with thirty-six affordable residential units on the upper floors and a commercial space on the ground level and a third-floor roof restaurant space. B, a two-story other building, a two-story mixed-use building that will, with a mixture of residential and commercial space, including three live-work units and a manager's unit. The project may, the project also proposes related site improvements to include access drive, eighty parking spaces, forty-eight bicycle parking spaces, utility extensions, outdoor lighting, electrical vehicle charging stations, stormwater, LID units, features, walkways, recreational improvements, traffic calming improvements, open space landscaping and signage. The city will also be requiring off-street, off-site improvements and/or development impact fees for the following. Improvement of the, of the Creek Trail, pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Taylor and Hatchery Road, free wastewater treatment system improvements, all allowed under state density bonus law governing code six nine, excuse me, six-five-nine-one-five. Project will be requesting concessions for development standards in the zoning code that will, may include building height setbacks, off-street parking. This project is found to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per paragraph fifteen-three-three-two, class thirty-two of the CECL guidelines, exempting projects categorized as infill development to meet this, the criteria, certain criteria. Gary, with that, I'll let you do your presentation, please.
Okay. Thank you, Earl. So similar to the prior agenda items, this is on the meeting or this agenda to update the commission of the community on the permit process for this project. So this is going to be kind of a two-part presentation where staff will present. And when I get to the end, I'll show the site plan. And then the applicant will then present after that. So it'll be two-part presentation. And the applicant will be available to answer questions of the commission. So similar to the prior items tonight, we're asking to receive the staff reports and the presentation of the applicant, open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, discuss the project and ask questions of city staff and the applicant, and then continue the public hearing to the June nineteenth regularly scheduled meeting. So similar to kind of the way I started the last agenda item, I want to give a little bit of background, not only about the Powers Creek District, but also the process for the Opportunity Zone. So this again is one of those old historic photos of the Macintosh Mill. And those have been around for several decades. Understand, when that mill closed, the city planned for that area to be an industrial park. And eventually had the industrial, light industrial businesses moved in. But after a while, especially with uses like Blue Lake Power and Calgon Carbon, the community's taste for heavy industrial development started to wane and diminish. And there was a planning effort at that time to shift the city away from industrial park-type concept and more to a business park. And one of the catalysts for that was the Mad River Brewery taproom. The city saw the potential down there for a business like that and really started to change the thinking in it being an industrial park and more of a business park. And then as I'll note a little bit in my presentation, in two thousand seventeen, the city undertook a visioning process for rebranding and rezoning of that area. And they ultimately arrived at the name of Powers Creek District. So just for reference, so we understand the site we're talking about. The Barrow Rock Community Project is being considered for an area that used to be right there in the log pond. And the log pond was filled in like the nineteen seventies or something like that. And this site's been vacant since the early, mid nineteen eighties when the city planned this area for an industrial park. So like I was saying, I'd like to talk a little bit about the creation of the Opportunity Zone, just to provide a little background. Sorry to those that have already seen this presentation and heard this before. So starting with the community visioning planning that I noted before, this wasn't the first time the city had done visioning or this kind of planning. It happened in the nineties, it happened in the two thousands. But this was the latest version where we had a new city staff, a new city manager, and wanted to look at other alternatives to use of all this land down there besides trying to keep the power plant going or having continued industrial development. And so these community visioning meetings were held. And consistent theme that came out of it is that Blue Lake should transition away from industrial development. And I think a lot of folks who have been impacted over the years by some of that development felt very strongly about that. So topics discussed, we're rebranding the business park. What should we do? What should we call it? Mixed-use development was a big topic, you know, getting away from industry, getting to a mixture of residential, commercial uses, kind of like the mixed-use zone around the downtown. And then some architectural styles and concepts were presented in this discuss as well. So some of the inputs, you know, the proposal to rebrand the business park and create new identity, a new name was positively received by the public. And they actually talked about different names at the meeting. And then mixed-use developments, staff showed photographs depicting mixed-use development. This is just an example of some of the things, not necessarily this one, but some of the types of things that were shown. And different scenarios for where mixed-use development could happen were presented. And also that concept was also well-received by the folks that participated. And then as far as residential developments, there was input that it should focus on affordability, especially in promoting opportunities for families and seniors, which were two groups who are identified as having housing needs in the community. Just a little overview on process. So work on the ozone occurred over a four-year period. I think some of the folks that spoke here today or tonight, participated in that process and noted, you know, that a lot of planning, commission, city council meetings held was part of that process, public hearings. A lot of public comment was received from the community. Issues of interest were shading of the trail and creek, noise, lighting, setbacks, height limits. And the community input was incorporated into the Opportunity Zone as development standards and performance standards. Development standards, things such as specific setbacks from the trail. Performance standards, specific to noise and lighting. And setbacks were also, I don't know that already, but height limits in relation to the trail as well, as far as allowing increased heights as you get farther away from the trail. That picture right there was just a little exercise we did with like a shading tool, just to kind of show different heights, what the shading would be at certain times of the year. Now, as part of creating a new zone and applying it to areas in the city, you also have to amend your general plan. So we went through that process as well, amending the land use element to identify the Opportunity Zone as a new planning tool and identifying its consistency with the mixed-use designation. And then we had also done some work through a strategic growth council grant in years past that was never adopted. And so there's a number of sustainable development principles that were also adopted at that time, in two thousand twenty-one, when the general plan land use element was amended to provide consistency with rebranding of the business park and the Opportunity Zone. So this picture here is Plaza Point in Arcata. Some folks may be familiar with this structure. This was the kind of structure that was looked at as an example of the type of things that could happen in the Opportunity Zone. And I just note here that the ozone limits residential units to around sixty-five percent of the floor area of the structure. So again, it can't be residential-only development. You have to have some component of non-residential, preferably commercial, that would bring the city sales tax. And then I think I noted before under the prior item that the ozone requires residential development to be above or behind non-residential development. So these are maps, zoning maps, that were presented as part of that planning process. This was the existing zoning at the time that the city was looking at changing the zoning down there. And we also had general plan map amendments that were done as part of this process. But essentially, you had all light industry north of Taylorway and heavy industry south of Taylorway. So that's what was there before the planning process to create the Opportunity Zone. And then afterwards, you basically had the Opportunity Zone applied over here, where it was heavy industry, applied most of the area north of Taylorway. It was light industrial and then on this larger property here as well. And then you may see that there was a change here with X. So for whatever reason, in the past, they had zoned the levee and the trail as either light industrial or industrial. And folks were like, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Why would we apply the open space recreation zone to those areas that are clearly used in that way and will never be developed? So essentially, this is just an aerial showing the area down there so you can better see it. But now the city, after that planning process, has this vacant land here that's available for mixed-use development. And I think it's maybe five to six acres, but definitely get projected out and the housing element is being able to be developed at the full density that's allowed in the Opportunity Zone just because of various things, including large shades and the need for improvements like access and stormwater and things like that. So that takes me to the project on the agenda tonight, which is a mixed-use project that is consistent with what's allowed in the Opportunity Zone. You probably don't need to go through this too much, but this project is also requiring a conditional use permit. And they have submitted an application. We sent it out for referral. We've got referral comments. Those have been forwarded to the applicant's team. And they are currently going through those and making amendments to the plans for the project. And so once we receive that back, then, you know, we can work on finalizing staff report, the CECL determination. And as I noted previously, as you get near the hearing, you put out the ten-day public hearing notice. And then public hearing at upcoming plan commission hearing. And as we noted earlier, will it be at this hearing, being continued to the regularly scheduled meeting in June, which I believe is June nineteenth? So overall project description. It was noted in the public hearing notice that it's a forty-unit project. I was corrected on that. It's proposing forty pre-residential units and eighteen thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space. So you'll see on the site plan, which the applicant will present further, you're looking at two buildings. There's a three-story mixed-use building with forty units. Thirty-six of those would be affordable units and four would be market rate. And the units would happen on the upper floors and commercial space on the ground floor and third floor. And then there'd be a smaller two-story building, mixed-use building, that would include three live-work units. On-site improvements to this project would be a bit more extensive based on the type of project size, things like that. But of course, you're going to have new access driveways, off-street parking, a lot of bicycle parking. I think they're proposing forty-eight. Utility connections. And I would note, you know, this area was intended for industrial development. So you have a good access to it. You have utilities that were extended down there. And really, it was never built out. So it's set up for development of a greater nature than was currently being proposed now. Of course, you have walkways around there landscaping to meet the city's landscaping requirements, open space to meet the open space requirements, the Opportunity Zone. Stormwater features, as I noted for the prior project, the city engineers requiring compliance with the Hubble LID manual requires onsite management of stormwater to minimize impacts to the city's stormwater system. There would be outdoor lighting, including some new street lighting along the project frontage. Electric vehicle charging stations, a requirement of the Green Building Code. They'll have to provide some of those. Recreation improvements, some of the funding sources they use require them. And they would also be contributing in some manner to the bike park adjacent to the site that's proposed. Traffic calming improvements. There would be some improvements along the frontage to kind of slow traffic down and also accommodate parking along the frontage. Some of that shown on the site plan that they'll present. And then of course, signage for multifamily projects like this. Now, off-site improvements, which could be done either through the applicant constructing these things or through the payment of development impact fees, would look at things like improvement of the Creek Trail to have it be paved, something similar to what was done with the Annie and Mary Trail. And then also as part of the city's plans for complete streets improvements along the industrial truck route, pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Taylorway and Hatchery Road, which could be improved to facilitate better pet bike access. And then folks have asked about wastewater treatment system improvements. The city knows what improvements are needed and previously planned to do them for the Mad River Brewery. And by the way, the Mad River Brewery chose to not do that project. They were not denied in any way for doing that. The city was prepared to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant for that project. But bottom line is, you know, there's a few hundred thousand dollars in improvements that are needed to get another hundred eighty residential equivalent units. The city, in essence, will be doing those improvements. And each project will have to pay their fair share contribution. And that'll be based on the amount of residential equivalent units that are estimated for that project. So forty-three residential units would be forty-three RUs. And then whenever the commercial uses would come online, they would estimate what those were at that time. And then they would pay those fees as well. So they would be paying their fair share contribution to those needed improvements, as would any of these projects down in the Powers Creek District. As far as CEWA, I gave an answer to the planning commission on use of the infill exemption, the exceptions to use and exemption. But specifically for this project, you know, there was a number of special studies required. So that could help us determine what the CECL determination would be. The traffic study, well, not just done for this project, but done for several of the projects. Also, for this project specifically, a biological resources assessment, getting biologists and scientists out there to look at whether the site has potential habitat for rare threat or endangered species. Cal E-mot emissions modeling to determine whether this project would have substantial air quality impacts. A cultural resource investigation to determine whether this project would have impacts to historic or cultural resources. A soil and groundwater management plan, which is typical for development on former mill sites. It's kind of an inadvertent discovery protocol for things like diesel or other petroleum hydrocarbons that may be present. And then geotechnical investigation and geologic hazards evaluation. As we showed in those historic aerial photos, there's a little log pond. It was filled with stuff. And that stuff may not be the best materials for development. So the geotechnical investigation contains engineering recommendations for foundation and other things so the site can be developed. So at this point, based on information that we have in these studies, staff's intending to recommend the infill exemption. But again, we'll be writing a report explaining the findings of these studies and how that exemption is potentially met. And that would be attached to the staff report. So here is the current site plan for the project. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this. The applicant's going to present more on this. And we'll bring up their presentation in a second. They'll go ahead and continue on with the presentation. But this is really showing the ground floor, you know, the first floor, where you're seeing a fair amount of commercial, common area, cafe, things like that. You can see the parking on either side, traffic calming improvements in front, open space, you know, a longer part of the project, all that kind of stuff. And with that, I should probably pass it on to the applicant to continue the presentations, so they can talk more about their plans here.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, maybe?
This is on the desktop.
This is on the desktop.
Okay, thank you. Do you see that? Great.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thanks to the plan commission for helping us.
Hold on one moment. Let's just make sure we get this.
I had repair earlier that seemed to work.
I'm not seeing that on my screen. This thing's locked up. I'll come check this on in.
It says cancel.
Okay. Can't tell you that. This is a teacher mode. This is not good. All right. Back over white. And everything going, blink and.
It's not your computer, just okay.
Well, that's, that's why I put up on the screen.
Yeah.
It's a venture, buddy.
There you go. I'm not very.
All right, I get it.
All right, thanks, Gary. Hi, everybody. My name's McCarlyse Dibble. I'm development project manager for Dancoe Communities. This is one of the projects that I work with on. I actually was a Blue Lake resident from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. So I really know what's special is out here. I can really appreciate just all the passion in the community about the way that the city's developing. So I'm just here tonight to give a little bit more background on the project and where we're at today. So I'm also going to tell just briefly a little bit about our affordable housing experience with the Dancoe Group, talk about the project and the development of the site plan. There have been a couple of changes since the last time we met. We've incorporated a new name that was put out there by the arson heritage commission. We've been meeting with them. And we'll meet again with them this week to talk about amenities to the community and the look of it, and just to collaborate a little bit more in a formal way with the community on the development of the project. So as Gary mentioned, we're not really looking for any kind of approval or decision tonight. We're just here to let you know a little bit more about where we're at and what we've changed since the last time we were together. And you've got the next slide here. So I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with the Dancoe Group in some form, but just one slide on our accomplishments in affordable housing. We're a local Humboldt County company that has the development company, Dancoe Communities, Dancoe Builders and Dancoe Builders West, our contracting companies. And we also do property management for our affordable housing communities. We've done twenty-eight affordable properties to date that have been placed in service, meaning that they have been built and there are tenants living there currently. Of those twenty-eight properties, they comprise about twelve hundred units. And we manage over a thousand of those units. We've also got thirteen other projects currently in our pipeline with over eight hundred and seventy units that are in the financing phase or under construction. Go to the next slide. So Chris Starr is the president of our company. And he is who I've been working on with this project. He's not here tonight, but he might be at the next meeting. And then also, we've got Kibuja Architects as the architect on the project. And Cash is here as well. There he is. To answer any specific questions about the design once we get into the public hearing of the planning commission like that. So Gary kind of went over the Opportunity Zone. And this project is proposed in the Opportunity Zone, which is, you know, is an economic development tool that the city can use to use for growth in ways that's desired in the city, getting away from industrial uses and into residential and commercial uses. So this project is pursuing a conditional use permit, as was mentioned. And that is what's needed for any kind of a development over four or five units. And then the commercial space that we're going to be including, there's a couple of units of commercial. We're not, you know, totally sure who's going to go in there at this point in terms of the business. But uses that could be done there would be something like light manufacturing, art, crafts, ceramics, foods, beverage, or distribution and warehousing, or commercial opportunities, including bakeries, bars, art galleries, bookstores, clothing stores, barber shops, for example, forests, things like that. And then you could also be professional offices, research, medical, consulting, real estate, or recreation, education, and public works. So we've done a mixed-use development for Humboldt County. Gary mentioned Plaza Point in Arcata, which is right next to the co-op. That property is a senior affordable housing complex on top with twenty-nine units of affordable housing for seniors. And then on the bottom, there are multiple commercial spaces. There's Foodwise, which is a vegan food production company. There's Smoothwell, there's a plotty studio, there's been shop. And there are other opportunities there for commercial as well. So some of the ideas that we have for our residential development piece would be amenities to the residential development alone, such as a community room and community kitchen. There could be a game room, there could be a fitness space or an art space or a computer lab. Usually incorporate common gardens or community gardens into the landscaping so that tenants can grow their own food and flowers. There is also an idea for an outdoor gathering area and sports court, top lot. And there's also a rooftop that is planned in at this point as well. And then, as I mentioned, that's all combined with ground floor, commercial, intermixed. So there could be a cafe or restaurant, commercial retail, and we're also putting versus live-work units now. So this is the current site plan, and Gary had that up earlier. So for the site plan, or for the plan in general, just a quick overview of the programming. In terms of residential units, we have programmed in ten one-bedroom units in the main building, twenty-two-bedroom units in the main building, ten three-bedroom units in the main building. And then separately, there's been a live-work building proposed. So that would be a two-story live-work space. And this was incorporated as a part of the community feedback that it would be nice to have, you know, for artists in the community or people that are running their own business and may not, you know, have the resources to pay for an office or studio space, that we could combine that with their home unit and so that we could kind of make it de facto more affordable for those people to have their own business and place a business and also live in the same spot. Then Gary also mentioned, I believe, that some of the housing is going to be affordable, some is intended to be market rate. So there's thirty-six units of proposed affordable housing. And the affordability levels would be between thirty and sixty percent of the area median income. So a hundred percent of the area median income in Humboldt County would be just your average salary. There's the three units proposed at market rate and then three live-work units, which are also considered market rate. And of the thirty-six units, there's also a manager's unit. So there's a proposed number of forty-three units in the project and three of those would be live-work. And then Gary also mentioned there are eighteen thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space, which is mostly on the bottom floor and then some on the third floor for the cafe. So this is the residential ground floor. The common area is proposed about twenty-two hundred square feet. So this would be the items that I said earlier, like a community room, a kitchen, potentially a flex space so that we could have services providers come in and do classes, hold meetings, and just kind of use that space for community events. There could be an exercise space. And there's also an onsite manager in the project. So the manager would have a locker downstairs, somewhere similar to this building. There's also going to be a climate of open outdoor area. So that's another amenity to the project. And then also on the ground floor, there'd be about thirteen thousand three hundred square feet of commercial space. And right now, we've got four different, separate spaces planned. So it could be four separate businesses there. But we're still kind of working that out and seeing who could be available for those spaces. There's also the idea for a cafe on the ground floor. We had. We had talked to Lowe's Bagels about potentially coming into that space. Nothing's finalized with that yet, but you know, a nice local business for residents to enjoy as well as the greater community. And then there's also pretty live-work units there. We go to the next slide. This is the second floor, which is all residential, so you can just kind of see how it looked out there. And then on the third floor, we've got mostly residential. And then the idea was for a rooftop dining area to take advantage of the beautiful lake afternoons, with some indoor space as well as the outdoor space. Manager's unit is also on that floor. Next slide. So this is a site layout. It's essentially what we saw before, but you can kind of just see the roof line and the photo will take panels that are provisioned to be there on the roof. And we've got parking there, there's 80 spaces, as Gary mentioned. And there's, you can kind of see the traffic calming of Taylor Way there with the median and then pulling parking, angle parking right there. It's kind of hard to read this, but this is a chart of the Humboldt area median income maximum income levels for 2022. They haven't come out with 2023 yet, so this is what we're operating under currently. This is updated yearly by HUD and it sets the AMI levels that we've been speaking of. So pretty much the affordability restrictions for tax credit projects. So just to touch on some of the examples, the project would be serving low-income members of the community. And so these are the maximum income levels. So you can see where I've highlighted on the first column there. If you're a single person making minimum wage, you're earning around $32,000 a year. So with that, you'd qualify for a 60% AMI income level. And then in the second example, in the third column, you can see maybe a single parent earning $20 an hour that has two kids, earning about $41,000 a year and they would qualify as a 55% income level for a three-person household. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll kind of see how that translates into the rent levels that would be allowed for, for these people, these households. So for that first example of a single person earning $15 an hour, you'd be able to afford an apartment at $877 a month. And that's including utilities as well. So we're always taking the utilities out of the value of the rent. So you'd never be paying more than $877 a month this year with that kind of an income level. And then similarly, with the second example, a three-bedroom apartment would be available to a single parent with two kids for just over $1,100 a month. So you can kind of just get an idea of, you know, the kind of folks that we're serving with this and the income affordability of the project we have. So Gary did give a little bit of timeline earlier, but just a little refresher. We signed a development agreement with the city of Blue Lake last June. So since then, we've been working on getting all of these studies done that Gary was explaining about. So we got the cultural resources, the biological, the traffic studies, your technical report, soil and groundwater management plan, all of these that are going in to support the CEQA exemption for the project. So, you know, from that time on, we've been doing the work for the condition use permit, getting the project entitled and designed and working on the CEQA process. So we're hoping that we can make a decision on that next month, but we'll see. So then in the spring and summer of this year, we're intending to apply for our first grant. It all depends on whether or not we are able to obtain the condition use permit and also get the housing element adopted and certified. Lots of the programs that we're applying to for grant funding, they require that we have a housing element certified and they also have points built into the point categories that you're only competitive really if you have your entitlements, meaning your permits, conditioning is permitted and CEQA complete. So that's kind of the next step for us and we're really excited to get to that point because applying for funding is really how we're going to be able to bring this project into reality. So, you know, if all goes according to the plan from our perspective, then we could potentially be under construction by the spring or summer of 2024, but that's the most accelerated timeline. So, you know, we'll just have to see where we go. And just to touch on that, for these affordable housing projects, we put together a fairly complex financing packages that involve construction lenders and permanent loans and tax credit investors and state and federal financing sources. And the environment for funding is super competitive, but you know, it's risky. You don't get a project funded once we have it under permit. So, you know, if it's not this year, we'll keep trying and trying and strategizing on how to get to grant funding if we need to build the project.
Is there another slide?
Oh, I think there's one more. Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much where we're at. We are, you know, just really excited to get this project the next phase and really to start applying for grant funding. As Gary mentioned, we are collaborating, collaborating with the city to make a lot of improvements in the surrounding areas, attention to the trail, to the water treatment plant, to traffic cooling measures around and to the intersection out by the brewery. And so, you know, we hope that, once we get on our way to the, to apply for grant funding, we're able to bring on this community to the project with a lot of other needed infrastructure improvements. Thank you all for the time. And I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll open this up for public hearing, take public testimony at this time.
Hi, this is, I just heard that there were reports that are on file from, just to cover some of the clearance, looking at the environmental stuff. I don't know where that is, never seen this. Whether on the webpage or not, haven't seen them. I don't know how long they've been around, but this has been since people have been asking about CEQA. Please make those reports available. And this is when I would ask for a, what we call town hall meeting or a public forum in association with the staff report. Because Gary, you brought up there's going to be a staff report for both the Russo Development and now we're talking about Danco. So can there not be a report, a public meeting, not, not a commission meeting, but a town hall or a public forum in association with these reports that will include the information available in advance, such as these, these other reports that were mentioned that you said have been done and they just haven't, they're not on file anywhere for us to access. So, so that's, those are two things. One of it, where are the reports that haven't been available? Please make them available and also have a town hall meeting. I think the staff report seemed to be a draft format and those would go out to the public and then have a meeting, a town hall meeting for both of these projects and particularly this one because of the scale. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I just had a question. I think that I heard that there were only 80 parking spaces and that's enough for two parking spaces per residential unit. That leaves absolutely no parking spaces for any restaurants, any buildings, store, visitors of people that are going to live in the facilities or project proposed. I just, I'm wondering, I understand that the ratio can be lesser because of the specified guidelines you guys are utilizing for. Sorry, I can't think of the word, but basically it lowers the standards and it lowers the standards to which the people living in these apartments are going to get. They're not going to have as ample services as they would otherwise. So I'm wondering about the parking. And then I just want to say as a Native American and seeing the word rebranding a lot in Buda Lot, I think it's really atrocious to use the word Buda Lot as, as a brand. This building does not serve the Native American community in any way, shape or form. I haven't seen an official report or any actual support from any tribe using the, you know, Native American heritage, I guess, as a sales pitch, is what I feel.
Thank you.
Lynn, what again? There are, there's been some more details given to us, but not very many details, the elevations and a lot more to do. So I like the idea of a town hall meeting because this is very difficult to have people ask questions and then some get answered and some don't. And it's pretty, pretty awkwardly, I think, for public comments a little bit. I know it has to happen this way at the public, at the planning commission meeting. A different format, I think, would be helpful. And I'm wondering when the detail will be released? Hopefully not, again, in production with the next planning commission meeting. There are only 72 hours back of clock on a Friday, which means there's no written available until Monday, which is actually only a few hours before the meeting. Because they're not available online, but online is not the same. If people don't have computer access, they're talking about low population, the parlay process. I think that can be a problem. So I just wonder when the written details of this project, especially including the elevation, will be available. And then just a quick comment, I know it's not official, but paving the trail like any, every trail. I live next to the trail and I hear ATVs going at nine at one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning. They're up to no good, I suspect, and they would love a paved trail. But the dog walkers and the dogs, maybe not so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Matt Watts. You know, my personal preference, I'd rather see a park. I'd rather see Blue Lake stay small. But see, if this, somebody gave this to me, I don't see the compatibility between like a yoga studio and a restaurant and the gravel trucks. So watching all of this, I thought of a magic trick to keep the gravel trucks, but make them disappear. What if there was a new access road from Hatchery inside the Levy Trail? It would be a new access road for B and B, new access road for the RV park and for the gravel trucks to go along there. Maybe with a sound wall to protect my beloved Levy Trail, which I walk every day. But that would be a way to have the gravel trucks over there, not even passing the yoga studio and the restaurants and the people trying to sleep during the day because they work all night. I mean, I just want to throw that out there because the city owns part of that property and the one on Hatchery's for sale cut an access road there. Maybe B and B could use a new access road and the RV, there's RV park, they could all, all the RVs can go through there and sit in front of the yoga studio, the yogurt studio and that shop or whatever, you know, it happens. I just thought of that, you know? If the city owns it, why don't you go through there?
Thank you.
I'm sorry for saying that in the morning.
Scott, you're Blue Lake. There's a lot going on here and I certainly think that a forum that is different than the constraints of planning commission or typical city council would be good. But it's been a challenge to get public information. Going to the website two weeks ago, all the documents, including the disposition and development agreement were out of date, had crossed out, crosshatched, and there was no attachment six. So after an email to city staff, I was provided with the DDA, attachment six was included, but I couldn't figure out where to find the rent. So just in additional reading, it says in article five of attachment five, the base rate is $1 a year. To many of us, that makes no damn sense whatsoever. So there's a lot of problems with this project, including the understanding or misunderstanding of where we're at with this. I really appreciate developers reps saying they signed the agreement for the DDA almost a year ago. But we, the community, can't get current information two weeks ago? There's something wrong with this picture.
Absolutely, yes.
So I could go on because I thought tonight we'd have drawings and elevations and things like that. But it's a public hearing, but we're not going to consider the project for approval. So that's confusing. Usually when I go to a planning commission meeting, they have everything together, even in Humboldt County. It's kind of a joke, but.
Sorry, I missed it.
So I'm not convinced that Danco's project fits in the well-articulated vision the community spent years on for the ozone, where you live and work in that zone. Because the people that I know that qualify for this limited income, particularly the senior citizens, are well past their working career. I know of individuals who qualify because of illnesses, medical conditions. I'm not convinced we're going to see 36 units occupied by people who are in fact going to be able to work in the ozone. So I think a better mix would be something like 50. And up until tonight, we thought there were 40 units total. Now we hear this 43, so there's some confusion about that. But 36 of 40 units, that's 90% is, has subsidized low income. So there's a number of community concerns about this that we're going to deal with again at your next continued public hearing and then when it goes to the city. But let's get all the information out there at one time. I really wanted to see the traffic studies, which Gary was kind enough to meet with me and tell me that they were already done. Why aren't they here tonight? Having a chance to review the relevant studies and documents because, again, we're not doing objective standards. We're using the DDA as a workaround, but all the information is hard to find. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm going to get all my points here, sorry.
It's okay, I'll be sure. Jeff Landon. I've, I've never been for the plan permission to your comment, but I've been between for the city of all. I, I completely oppose this thing, okay? I just want to go on record, it's too big. The impact is too big for our town. And while I certainly support people being able to afford where they live, Blue Lake's a wonderful place and not against any of that. But I sort of wonder as a rent payer myself, what I'd get out of this. I certainly pay more than any of these rates. Nobody's going to give me a break. But I just honestly think that when I look at that, it's just too big for our community. Have the thing, okay? Make it smaller, make it less impactful for Greenwood, for Powers Creek, for Hatchery Road, all that stuff. Because this is going to be a really big deal and it's a total game changer for our, our community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy again. I want to second what Lynn is saying about, you know, be provided with some elevations, more details. It's hard for people who are not professionals in the construction industry to be able to really envision what this looks like. I appreciate that Gary had some drawings, renderings that showed how the shadows could cast. Still not quite informative enough. Appreciate that effort. Also want to second what Lynn was saying on town hall for this particular project. It has been divisive and inflammatory within this community to be able to have a discussion about affordable housing, Danco, takeaway and improvements. And I think with that said, I'm not saying kill the project or go for the project, but I think we need a forum specifically to address this project because it bogs down so many others. I mean, Russo's project is getting all, you know, tangled up in this too. It wouldn't be nice to have a master plan, but I think you all have heard that from me enough. I also want to second what Scott had to say about getting public information. I do find that the website is very difficult to be able to access what has happened. I know in the past I've tried to access some of the previous meetings and they seem, there's a lot less information there than what was actually said in the meetings. So for the planning commission, especially with something where so many people are invested in this, is there a way, either through Zoom meetings and afterwards with postings and then perhaps breaking out some of these projects so that we can get more input as a community and that we can get some progress with these two? Bless y'all for coming out here and doing this. Anybody on these positions, it takes a lot of time and we're working with it. The last would be, well, those traffic studies. Capacity is one thing, quality of life is another. I can't imagine, even if we say, oh, we, we're not going to be at capacity until 15,000 vehicles. Well, you know, somebody, what would that experience be like? I don't think any of us wants to have that. And this project right here, where it's not just the 80 units with a potential of about maybe 240 more residents, which is about 17% increase in the population of Blue Lake over nine, plus we want to have retail with this. and stuff, huge impacts with limited access and a town that has restricted many of the access points into one-way streets and calming measures such as a bump out or nothing to professional driver. They're not going to run over it, but they can drive past it just as quickly. They can get their trucks, their vehicles within a month's ass, as we'd say. So that's the traffic studies, please be part of this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to kind of take example of what she says. I've been here for a long time and I have little grants and I take for a walk and we'll walk along with both ways we'll go across there. But are we going to be able to afford to have enough law enforcement? Right now, people go by my house, they don't even slow down to stop, so they just keep going, keep going, keep going. There's a bunch of rules on the tennis courts, they don't abide by those rules. So you have that much more, especially with maybe the affordable housing, they're not going to necessarily abide by the law, like they don't do it now. So I'm just worried about extra traffic and all of a sudden, one kid goes out, boom, you know? I'd hate to see my grandkid get hit, you know? I try to watch, we look both ways, but right now, it's manageable. But when you got more traffic, I don't know it's going to be manageable. Instead of the beautiful town we have where everybody says hi and waves, you're going to have cars zip in mind, zip in mind that you don't even know. So that's the quality of life I'm talking about.
Amen. Great.
I just want to piggyback on both, what both these people said. You know, I don't even sure our fire department can handle it. We had a fire today in Blue Lake and house burnt down. I stood there and watched it for thirty minutes for the fire department got there. Not only that, yes ma'am, that is it, I was standing right there. And not only that, but we can't get the law out here. It's almost impossible to get a sheriff out here. We don't have a police station, I hear nobody even talking about that. So, I mean, I'm five generations here and I feel like my grandparents and their parents are rolling over in their graves right now. I'm sorry, but how do we get this stopped?
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Becky Gordon and I agree with all of them. We live here for our quality, for our small town. We don't want the increased traffic, which is not, we're not against affordable housing, smaller ones like Russo's, things like that are great, but when you get this huge thing like this in here, this is not what I built my house here for, this is not what we started our business here for. I'm also five generations in this town. I don't want to see it, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
So I'm going to piggyback off of everything everyone said, every negative thing that was said, I piggyback off of that. I don't want this to happen. If it does have to happen, go back to the twenty-three units that they said that we had to have. We don't have to have forty units, we don't have to have all this crap. Keep it small. Listen, listen to the people that are here, you know? We want this small-town feel. We don't want a whole bunch more people living here. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not the best public speaker and my workday is like forty hours long to this point. My name is Molly Coleman, I'm the coordinator of Blue Lake Community Resource Center that operates out of this building and I've been working here for about eight years now. I'm here today to show my support for the new housing element in the Danco mixed-use affordable housing project. During my time at the resource center, I've assisted a lot of community members with various services and resource referrals. One of the biggest needs we see besides food is access to affordable and adequate housing. In the past, I've seen many individuals and families forced to pack up and relocate to another town with more affordable options. I have also witnessed individuals who families live in substandard and unsafe housing because they would rather live in those conditions than leave Blue Lake. Having a housing facility like the proposed Danco project would be such an amazing blessing to so many people. I'm choosing to view this project as a positive asset to the community. When I envision this project, my heart is happy for the families and individuals that I get to call at home. I'm excited about the retail spaces and the possibilities of new businesses and employment opportunities and also the community space where I can go do outreach events. Unfortunately, I feel like there's a nasty stigma attached to affordable housing, also referred to as low-income housing. It sends me to hear the negative comments buzzing around town, especially the comments that speak down to people living in poverty. I think many community members would be surprised about how many of their friends, neighbors and fellow community members will qualify for a housing assistance program. And I believe a lot of them are afraid to speak up too because they are treated as substandard humans at this point for being poor. I'll break that stigma right now. Up until I received my promotion last December, I would have qualified to live in this new project. I think I would have been a great neighbor and a great addition to this community. I love this community. Once again, I'm the coordinator of the resource center and I have served and loved this community for the top eight years. I've assisted so many struggling community members and I've also seen so many communities that are step up and help those who are struggling. I think this is one of those times that we can step up and help the people in our community who are struggling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any more comments? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and we'll turn the discussion over to possibly answer a few of the questions that were closing, any questions? I'll make the same comment I did on the last project. I know there's more coming in regards to elevations and information that you'll be providing, you know, from that standpoint. So if that happens by the next meeting, great. If not, it'll happen when it happens and I'm sure you'll meet the requirements in order to present your project to us. So I'm looking forward to seeing that too. When I just saw the site plan, I thought same thing, but then I saw that more was coming later, so, or I would have said something to Cash. So, I say, so, questions?
Yeah, so I'd like to get a little direction from staff because I'm a little confused. I feel like some of the comments, questions, mostly comments, are more addressed to council and to processes that have already taken place that the commission doesn't have any oversight on. And so I think maybe it would be helpful to break that down a little bit, Gary, or, I mean, there's just some of the stuff that we have no oversight on.
Sure.
And it's just not in our purview.
Yeah, and I would ask Andrew Maynard or Ryan or anybody else that's familiar with this to answer as well, but things such as the DDA is, you know, council decision is something the council worked on with Danco, there's many meetings held about it, you know, that kind of thing. Whether a master plan is done for Powers Creek District would have to be direction that comes from the council. So you're right, there's a number of things that would need to be handled at the council level. You know, if you felt like it as a commission, you could try and forward a recommendation on some of these items and the council could consider that, but ultimately, they wouldn't be your decision as the planning commission.
Yeah, I guess I would go along with what's being said here in regards to that. Because it's not part of our, as a commission, planning commission, some of this information. But it seemed to be confusing to our audience from the standpoint of the whole process of the DDA and I'm sure that you met all the requirements for review and everything and public comment and those kind of things at the council meetings for this kind of stuff too, so. But of course, that's not part of our previews too, so.
Right.
So I guess I would turn to others to respond to that a little bit, maybe to help answer some of the questions in regards to that.
Well, I'd say, you know, with the DDA, the council was represented by outside specialty council with respect to development agreement. It is an agreement that the city has entered into in June of 2022, as was represented. But the planning commission's role is to consider the project.
Right.
Consider the zoning, consider the conditions of approval, consider the CECL recommendations and make a decision based on that.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other?
Make recommendations based on what the project is proposing versus what the rules allow essentially.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Not to make new rules or change rules.
Yeah, we're not changing.
I think that's where a lot of the confusion is, we can't just decide as a commission to change rules that already are in place and that exist. But where does, where do commissioners sit in terms of requesting council to do more public outreach or the community?
In regards to a possible town hall.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not averse to it either. The community needs to learn more about it. Now, we heard positive and negative here this evening, and I think some of the positive side in regards to the developer side might be helpful in a town hall to go into much more detail on the design of the project and that kind of stuff from that standpoint. So I don't think it could hurt, okay? I'm not sure what sway a few of you people are objection to it, but I think there's a need for the rest of the population here to maybe know more about the project from that standpoint. Yeah, I would, I would support it and I don't know what steps we'd need to go through with, maybe in regards to doing something like that.
Well, I think I would.
Maybe you've got some comment here.
Well, and I think I would just want to know what you would want, what your expectations of a town hall would be. You have some parameters, you have zoning, you have a project that's coming through for you guys to evaluate based upon, you know, certain parameters under your purview. What would you be looking for in a town hall? The council's already given a position with the DDA and now you're moving through a specific process to evaluate that project. So I guess I would want to know what you would be looking for in that respect.
I think just based on comments from the community, I think that if the commission so wanted to, we could make a recommendation. Obviously, we can't make it a requirement, but we can make a recommendation that a town hall be put together based on what we've heard.
And are you looking for specific information to come back to you or are you just wanting it presented at a town hall forum? Because you're, we're already, we're on a path and so it's, it's the projects, the city has an agreement to move the projects through a process to get to a point whether it can be or cannot be approved.
I think, I think part of it is that part of what we do is important to have public feedback at these meetings and part of that is informed public feedback. And I think that there's definitely, at least from tonight, I'm not seeing informed public feedback. I've seen a lot of public feedback, but there seems to be a lot of gaps in what is known that can and can't be done here. And I think it would behoove us at our next meeting to have that, you know? I think a lot could be done with regards to just education, especially with regards to public accessibility to a lot of the information that people want and, you know, just making sure that, you know, I think, I think that there'd be, you know, a lot better questions and a lot more questions possibly that we could lend our expertise to that I don't really feel we were able to tonight.
Yeah, there would be some of the reports that are required through the CECL process made more available. I've heard a couple of times this evening that there's a lack of, where can we go to get information to get, learn more about something?
So Gary, can you kind of talk about where you're at in the process of compiling that documentation? Because I think there's a belief that there's documents out there that exist that people don't have access to, but you're still moving through a process of compiling that documentation and preparing reports and.
Yeah, so some of the technical studies have been completed and are on the table over there this evening and will be available to city hall in review. Some of them haven't been completed, such as the traffic study, and once it is completed, we would make that available as well. Uploading these to the Powers Creek District page on the city's website would be a step we could take as well, but folks leading up to this meeting requested that we have some of those available and there they are. I would ask that folks not take the copies, they're meant to go to city hall and be available for review at city hall, but they should be available on the website shortly.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Because we heard website a couple of times. If that could be done, that'd be great too.
I'd like to make a motion that the city further public outreach on this item.
At least we discuss to some extent a little bit more how that might come together and what kind of information we can work with you and maybe come up with something that would be advantageous for the concerns that you've heard tonight from this standpoint that can better explain and give the opportunity to the developer to do the same. Obviously, they've been involved in this project quite a bit of time, they give a lot of time and energy into this project to date, but it seems like the public hasn't learned about it until now, until it got to this level, so, which is unfortunate, you know, from that standpoint, so.
This is your first go at seeing it, so that's part, that's why we're here.
No, I know.
Because we haven't seen, it's all coming together and that's why we're presenting it to you guys here.
No, I understand. I've been on both sides of this fence, so totally understand both sides of the issue from that standpoint, but I would support having that kind of discussion with staff to see if there's an opportunity to put something together in a township, town hall atmosphere. How that actually looks like, I'm not sure, but I think a discussion might be, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to make a motion to recommend that the city look at putting together a town hall to discuss this issue to better inform the public, residents of the town. I think that'll be positive in both directions.
Okay, my second thought, okay. All right, all in favor?
I.
Okay, so. Thank you. Move that over.
Thank you.
Okay.
As a comment to folks, this is the first we've seen too. So when you feel blindsided, we sort of understand because it's new to us and so when we hear you say you're blindsided, we want all of us to understand it better.
Obviously, as you've been linking, you know, in the area and Manny has told us a little about the working and a little bit about the previous meetings, what's going on, what's happening. She's done the best she probably can from that standpoint, a little bit about the DDA, you know, from that standpoint in that city because it's a joint kind of project, there's a lot of ownership there, so. But until we actually receive it, and then when I got, when I got my packet Friday night, Friday evening.
After you put your batteries on.
Yeah, yeah, but still, you know, and yeah, then I had to lift it up, you know, so because it's hefty. But then I was a little disappointed when I got to the, just a site plan, that's all there is. And then I saw where it's not being voted on this evening, it's the, you know, or not recommended, regardless of the recommendation possibly for next meeting, so.
Can I make sure I understand, so you guys will be conducting a town hall on this issue?
No, the motion was to make a recommendation to city staff to put together a town hall meeting.
You want city staff to conduct a town hall, not planning commission?
We're recommending that.
Yes, that's a recommendation.
And the last town hall that we did was what, last May or something like that? And it was the council.
Someone's got to.
It was a generalized, you know, so the council ran the meeting basically and we took public comments and we responded to comments as they came in. Is that kind of thing you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I think because, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're not the body that makes that, you know, because.
I think you should be the town hall.
I'm sure you like us too, but that's not.
Well, can it be attended as a joint meeting?
I mean, we've done that.
Yeah, we've done.
We've done the joint meeting.
Sure.
Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, people prefer to do that.
Well, I mean, honestly, if the town hall is to give the commission feedback, then I think the commission should run the meeting.
No, the recommendation was for staff to provide a town hall meeting to inform the citizens. That was the recommendation.
But it'll be the council's decision, so they may say, you want the meeting, you run the meeting.
Okay.
They can also say now they don't want to do it, we'll just run. Of course.
Of course.
Yeah. So, no, I appreciate that. Beyond that, are there other questions of staff that you would like to go over?
I, I wait, I saw something more detailed. I don't want to go all over.
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. Do you have any other question?
No, I mean, our job is to just weigh public opinion, decide whether a project should be built or not. Our, our job is to look to see whether a developer.
The meeting's still going, please? Stay quiet if you could, please?
You guys have a good night.
Back to what I was saying, our job is to weigh through public opinion. Our job is to determine whether a developer idea for a project meets all of our codes of zoning and so forth. And so, you know.
There's a lot of confusion there.
Yeah, we don't have that kind of, as I understand it in the commission, we don't have that kind of power to kill a project one way or the other if a developer comes in here, whoever that is, on property that's out for sale and they meet the criteria, meets all the criteria, and meets all the, provides all the necessary reports and conditions that are set on the project, as long as they're within that guidelines, we could be in a problem. The other way, if we took the wrong, you know, we could put the city in, we have a responsibility to the entire community and not just a small group. So the comments that have been made this evening in regards to, I've lived here forever, this, that, and the other, those, they don't, they don't resonate with us. We can't do anything about it. We can't comment. We can't make a decision based on any of that kind of stuff. We understand, we sense, I sense it, okay? You know, I'm sorry the way you might feel in regards to that, but in our view as a planning commissioner, none of that makes, doesn't do anything for us. We can't respond to it. It's not in our, you know, our job description, I guess, is, I would say. So from that standpoint, it's unfortunate. I hate to see people, you know, come to planning commission meetings, pour their heart out from that standpoint, from that basis. But it's not something the planning commission can really respond to because.
Can I ask a question about?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
If it was a matter, again, my thing as I expressed, it's a matter of scale for me for this. So, does that then the planning commission weigh in on a scale the size of a project? Or since there's already this DDA thing, and it's already been put forth by the developer, is that then past you and it's a matter of the city council and the manager's office? Or do you have input on the size of the project?
We do.
What we do from the, as long as it meets the criteria that's in our, by law, all the regulations, then yes. Now, if they try to, if we have a height limitation and they want to go twice that, of course we get to say, wait a minute, you forgot to read this in your.
But so for providing development or number of units are impacted that, there is some purview that you have as the planning commission?
As long as it, yeah, but that depends on the size of the lot too, you know, on the size of the land and what they're, and the others, you need to understand from their standpoint, they're taking the risk, they're writing the check, okay? So, they're, they've done their own market. When they go out to develop this piece of property, I'm sure they take into account, is this feasible for me or, or not? We're doing this, you know, they're not in this just because they have unlimited funds that they can just spend unwisely, you know? So, from that standpoint, especially if they're going to be getting additional funding from other people, they're going to have to answer a lot more.
Sure, no, I understand.
You know, so there's, that's just, it's, there's that whole big deal, but in regards to us, we can't make an economic decision for a.
And we can't arbitrarily decide a number of units if they're working within.
Right. Well, that's what my question is, so.
Yeah, that's the direct question.
My question is, if, if like someone like myself thinks, okay, fine, you gotta put this thing down there, and it's smaller and it meets and it looks different, isn't as impactful, okay, who then, you know, is there, is there a city purview that can decide that? And, and it's not you, that's what you said?
I don't believe it is.
Okay, yeah.
The way I understand it.
Not anything, you know?
The rules that are on.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to ask. Okay, hopefully that answers your question, you know, from that standpoint. So, you need to understand what our responsibilities are as a planning commission for you people. That's, you know, that's who we work for indirectly, you know, from that standpoint. But we have certain guidelines we need to follow. One that protects you mainly, okay, that's what our, you know, is make sure that anybody that comes from the outside that wants to develop in our fine city meets the requirements. We get guided by staff to make sure that we're in line. And Gary has helped us many, many times when we've had those kind of discussions at previous planning commissions, and we rely on staff because they really got into the detail. But then when we ask questions in regards to staff, as you've heard tonight, he goes into further details in regards to what the state requires, the zoning, why it was written, the history behind it, how did we get from point A to point B, those kind of things, which gives us better knowledge before we're asked to either make a recommendation or, or ask for more information from that standpoint for what goes on for that approval process. So, understand it's not an easy process, and if you don't do it a lot or haven't done it in your past, coming to a meeting for your first time, this might be your first planning commission meeting, it can be mind boggling, no doubt. Okay, so, but bear with us, we're doing what we're supposed to do in the best interest of the city and what's being presented, and then the guidelines of all the things that we have to work with within the, our preview, so from that standpoint, so, okay? Does that help?
Can I speak on behalf of?
Yes, go right ahead. Speak up.
I'm wondering if the town hall meeting can potentially open up the dialogue for variances from the ozone constraints so that the scale of the building can be more appropriate for the site. What I'm getting at is that a lot of the setback requirements and the height requirements are forcing the structure and its mass to contain those 40 units, to be in a certain location at a certain length that is making it look like Ramada Inn in the middle of Taylor Way. So, so if we were to have a town hall meeting that we can open the dialogue regarding the possibility of variances that could open up the design option, so that instead of one large building, we can have multiple smaller buildings that could fit the context of it, that would be a really good exercise for the community, so that we don't end up with something that you might think is not scaled for the location. And it could be an alternative solution that you can compare to the, to this other one that meets the ozone standards. And then you can look at the two of them, or maybe a third one, and then say, okay, we think that this is most appropriate and, and fitting for the context of our, Powers Creek District.
If I could speak to that.
Yeah, please do.
Also would like, so, you may remember in creating the opportunity zone that with a use permit, we allowed this, so we could ask for exceptions to development standards. You know, there's some findings that have to be made in order to do that, but specifically with the use permit, you can do that, and it appears that the Russo project will be asking to do that. Uh, for the Danko project, because it's affordable housing, you have the state density bonus law, which if you have a certain percentage of affordable housing, you're allowed concessions, incentives, or waivers, which often include exceptions to development standards, such as setbacks, building height, things like that. So, in essence, you already have avenues for those exceptions. Obviously, to reconsider and revise the opportunity zone, you're talking about a much longer process, and most of these projects would be better served using the existing available avenues for asking for exceptions, either a conditional use permit in the case of regular, you know, market rate housing, or potentially concessions or waivers through the state density bonus law in the case of the affordable housing project.
Are those two, sorry, are those two separate things? The density bonus separate from the other one you mentioned?
Yes, so in the opportunity zone itself, which is a city code, a city law.
No, I understand that part of it, but you mentioned the density bonus, and there was another bonus, an economic bonus for, was it the scale, the way that rentals are set? Are those two separate bonuses or is that a single bonus that would allow exceptions?
I'm not sure what you're speaking of. So I was referring to the concessions or waivers allowed under state density bonus law versus with the conditional use permit. In the opportunity zone, you can ask for exceptions. I, I wasn't relating in any way to grants or anything like that.
I'm asserting that.
Okay. I heard the condition use, that we've got some leeway in regards of condition use for some of what Cash is talking about, correct?
Absolutely. With a conditional use permit, the opportunity zone, you can request exceptions to development.
Got you.
Yes, now the commission would have to make findings that are listed in there in order to do that, that would be contained in your resolution.
Right, it'd be part of the conditions of the project, yeah, I understand.
And we could also do that under the guise of the bonus.
If a project applies for and qualifies under state density bonus law for concessions and waivers, they can request those, yes. And the state would have to consider.
I guess I, I would correct the question back to Cash. Does that fit with what you just suggested? Cause it sounds like it does.
I'm sorry, so you're going to Cash?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Cash.
I think that it's just, it is good to be able to take this product that meets the majority of the requirements of the ozone, and then have an open mind in the town hall meeting for, to consider other alternatives, and then see, actually compare them to each other and see where we can go. It may not, you know, like Gary said in the very beginning, the original vision of Taylor Way as it is was for an industrial park. The road and the utilities are laid out there for an industrial park. In order to do proper res, mixed-use residential development in the scale that we're all speaking about today, is that road in the correct place to be, kind of like what Matt was getting at? Should we revisit that in a master plan kind of a visioning? Having, having the Danko project also be part of that process too? How do we get there long-term, you know, and it, it's really, I don't know the answer to that. I'm trying to do my very best to work with the existing constraints of the ozone. If you want to go to a town hall meeting, what are you trying to get out of it? If you're gonna come back and look still at the regulations of the ozone, you're not gonna get that much more of a different product because the program is requiring, kind of like what Jeff is getting at, the, with that density of the program, you're gonna end up with the same product along Taylor Way in that location because of the constraints that are existing on the site, where Taylor Way itself is, how the parking access should work, where the utility line is, where the trail is, where the setbacks are. There aren't a lot of alternatives there at that, at that density. And I can say that comfortably because, you know, I've been looking at it, you know, over a few years now with Mandy and Gary and Danko.
Right. Got you. Well, I think if, if a recommendation to consider a town hall, maybe that's gotta be one of the topics in regards to that, if, if we want to go there, so.
I think we went there.
Well, just, just let the commission know, on the 19th, if you, if you do continue tonight's public hearing to the 19th to consider approval of a project, if it's ready to be presented for approval, you always have the option to continue it further.
I understand.
You can get a full report on the 19th, though it can be a robust public comment session, and you can continue it further for multiple meetings.
Okay.
Until you're satisfied and ready to move the project forward one way or the other.
That's true.
And also, sorry, but approving it, understanding the potentials for change over time. We've had projects with Danko that have been approved, have gone through the funding cycle and got the funding, and then came back and redesigned it because we had a different economy, we had different city managers in places, city planners. So there's always a potential for change too, so that you don't necessarily lose the opportunity to get in line for the funding of the project, if that makes sense.
It does, it does. I understand that.
Yeah, and if that were to occur, then staff's gonna have to review is any revised submittal.
Well, of course.
Needs to go back.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, review by the planning commission.
Okay, absolutely.
Often times those changes won't be too substantial, it'll be fairly consistent, but we would have to review that.
What you're saying is you had to go back to the planning commission on those other projects when they changed, every single time.
Well, I'd love to know what Mandy thinks too. I don't want to miss it.
No, no.
Well, I think we've been working a long time to work, to get the opportunity zone, and that went through a very robust public process, and that's what gave you guys the framework, and that's what gives a developer the framework to work within. So, it's a bit concerning to hear that you have concerns with it when it's meeting what you're, what's being presented meets all those parameters. So, I'm a little bit confused in the process that we've gone through for, I guess this is going on five years, to get to a point where we have a project coming forward to you for consideration in the opportunity zone that meets the parameters of the opportunity zone. And now you want to flip it somehow, not really, I'm not understanding.
I think what the commission expressed was that we were concerned that there's confusion in the public about the project. We don't have enough information to be concerned or not at this point. This is very preliminary. But we clearly heard from the residents that there's confusion about the project. And so, it's a, it's a simple recommendation that we would like some outreach. That, I guess technically can totally be ignored, but I think that we have the right to recommend that more outreach occurs so that maybe we can smooth some of these things out and get some questions answered. I, I, I think that's.
Yeah. And when the complete application comes to you, as Ryan, the city attorney, you know, reviewing inconsistency with the general plan, the zoning code, and making findings as to whether it's compliant with that or other rules like state density bonus law, things like that, just to kind of know, you know, findings wise, I mean, there's been a lot of reasons for why folks don't like this project. It's too big, it doesn't fit in with the community, you know, things of that nature. Those aren't appropriate findings for denial of the project.
Right. Yeah, we, we understand.
We understand. There's a disconnect somewhere in this room by a number of people.
Well, that's why.
How did we get here? And it went right by them from some, some.
When you're looking at affordable housing projects, you've got some limitations, even further limitations of the findings you can make.
Absolutely.
Things like the Housing Accountability Act and things.
It's a very narrow window that we're operating on. And I think we all understand that, but I think there's a big disconnect there, and that, and that's why I made that recommendation, that there just be a little bit more outreach, which I think would be beneficial for the city and for city, the staff, and the residents.
I mean, that's what I heard tonight, and, and we're just kind of trying to respond.
Yeah, for us, if future needs.
You know, from that standpoint, plus I want to be able to walk down my neighborhood and not have somebody run over me. Cause I saw you, and you look like that guy who chairs the planning commission. So, but, yeah, so, I want to get along with all my neighbors, no matter, you know, where they live, you know, from that standpoint. But, so just understand that we're human beings here, we're also members of the community. So you're hearing a little bit about what they're saying coming out of us and how do we do that, okay? And I'm appeasing to you or city manager to say, you couldn't have missed some of this information that we heard tonight, negative or not, it's still.
We've been hearing that this is probably the same story for four years, so it's not new information.
But it seems like a lot of people didn't get the message somehow. And I'm not, I'm not just, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying, it's very vocal and have a right to be that way, but I, I might, I might ask the same question. Where have you been for four, not you individually, but where have we been as a community? And they don't have the, for some reason, they don't seem to have all the information they needed to be better informed about this.
Well, like I said, you guys are just seeing this the first time as well. That was the whole point, was to make a presentation of where we're at in the process. So, we weren't asked, we're not asking for you to make any recommendations, we're asking to see the project, see the work that's been done. Maybe you have some questions that we'll take back for the next meeting, where you'll have a more defined project that has elevations and fully defined reports, and then you can make better informed decision. There was, we weren't asking for you to make any decisions tonight, and so you heard some public comment, and, you know, if there's things within that public comment that were relevant versus just conjecture or opinion about the project, then that can be directed back to staff to address. But there was no, everyone's seeing this for the present of this point right now.
Give us the whole project, get it in the comments.
Okay. All right, we beat a, a.
So, the recommendation was that, say, you continue the public hearing to the second scheduled meeting.
Right.
I'll make a motion to continue.
I'll second that.
Very good, all in favor?
I.
Okay. All right, that concludes that item. Next agenda item. Ms. Lang is planning item.
Okay, upcoming meetings. Upcoming meetings, obviously.
Does everyone know about the 19th? Are we all good?
Are we all good for the 19th?
Well, I canceled a trip so I could be here for the 19th. If we don't have a meeting, I'll go on my trip, but.
I'll know next week. Possibly that we have to make travel for medical.
Okay.
We have the housing element, that's a good.
Yeah, 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 that's right, of course.
Something's gonna be raised this whole time.
Okay, good. In July, in the next two weeks.
I'm here for it. Anybody? Probably, we may have to go out.
See, I'll know in a week.
Well, we'll, we'll serve ambitions as we usually have. Okay, I'll.
I'm here.
Can I hear it?
I do, to adjourn.
I'm gonna second that. Okay, meeting, all in favor?